Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the March 28th meeting of the Dana Point Planning Commission to Order and ask Commissioner Gabbert to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yeah. Repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as well.
Thank you. All right. All right, that moves us on to approval of the minutes. I was not here at last meeting, at the last meeting, so I'll be abstaining. Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call, please.
Please let the record show that all planning commissioners are present except for Commissioner Dingra.
Thank you. Now, we're moving on to approval of the minutes from the March 14th Planning Commission meeting.
Actually, I have a recommended correction on item three. It said Chair Opal return to the chambers at 6:32. It should say Commissioner Opal. And I would move to approve with that correction.
Great. Second? Great, that's a first and a second. Please vote.
Good evening, Chair Nelson and planning commissioners. John Champ, I'm the case planner for the St. Edward's Art in Public Places project. Just to give you some quick background, the project site is located in the community's facilities zone with the city zoning or zoning map and is located just outside of the lantern district for the city. A little background here is that the, a project was approved in 2018, a condition use, or condition use permit for a new pastoral center as well as an arthax at the entry of the St. Edward Church. The art, which triggered the requirement for an art in public places, submittal and approval, which is why we are here today. The proposed art is a stained glass panel system located at the front, new front entry of the arthax. It's 385 square feet as well as a nine and a half foot tall Welcome Jesus statue at the entry. Here is a visual representation of the proposed art. As you can see here, the, the main front entry at the arthax is 11 feet tall and approximately 36 feet in width. So this new proposed stained glass panel composite will be filling that space as well as the Welcome Jesus statue in front of it. The requirement for the art in public places is that the project, the project cost should, the, the project cost, which is proposed here at just over $16 million, half of 1% should be spent on the art component. As proposed, over that amount is proposed at $140,000, so succeeding that by approximately $60,000. So it does meet that requirement. The requiring findings associated with this project have also been met in that the art in public places, the statue and the stained glass fulfill these requirements in that the, the stained glass is a custom design, is being installed along with the statue at the church entry. And this will enhance the overall project design as well as the surrounding neighborhood and city. Couple of unique points to mention is that the original artist, his son, who's also local out of Laguna Beach, will be doing the, or has completed the art component. So that's a, an expansion upon the, the story of the art component for the church. So that concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available for any questions as well as the applicant.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff from the commission? No? No, great. All right, we do have one public comment. I don't know, David Viper, did you want to come up and speak?
Just for questions.
Okay, great. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, great. Then we'll bring it back to the commission for a discussion and a motion. Commissioner Gabbert, or?
I'm, I think it's beautiful and it's going to be a wonderful addition to the church. You know, I, I visit No. 2 down quite frequently and, you know, the, the marque chagall of stained glass that was in there before the fire was, was always an amazing place to visit, so I support the project.
Thank you. Commissioner Opal.
So I really appreciate the fact that they're going to take five of the existing panels and rehab those and incorporate it into the new overall window. Also appreciate the fact that what we just learned tonight about it's the person, the original artist's son, so that multi-generational thing is, you know, something of itself as well. So fully supportive of it.
All right, thank you. Vice Chair Donner.
No comment.
No comment, all right. Then I will add my comments. I'm, I'm in support too. I agree with Commissioner Opal and Commissioner Gabbert. I, you know, I think when I first saw this, and this is not the first time we've seen a church come before us with a proposed art, and it's been debated here a couple times, I think. You know, my, my initial reaction is, A, is culture religion, because these are, you know, in one sense, the statues certainly a religious icon. And I don't think you can separate religion from art. I think they're inexplicably connected. Whether it's my culture or not is a whole difference, a whole different question. I don't think up here we get to, you know, determine if it's not my culture, then it doesn't fit. I think about, you know, I look at the statue and then I think about our surf icons, certainly not religious unless you're a surfer and they become, that may become almost a religion to some. So statues certainly meet the intent of the goal of the art in public places. And then the stained glass, I mean, is absolutely gorgeous. I don't know any stained glass that isn't created by artists. And so this meets all the tests. And then some, considering the value placement on or the, the costs associated with it, for those reasons, I'm in full support and would look for a motion. Commissioner Gabbert?
Yeah, I, I move that we approve the public art for the St. Edward's Church project.
I'd second that. Good and vote, please. All right, that item passes 4-0. Congratulations. And thank you. All right, moving on back to item, what would be, I guess, item three? Two? Well, we just did two. So this is the new three, or the, anyways, we know what it is. So this is coastal development permit, CDP 21-0002. Site development permit, SDP 21-0006. Vesting tentative track map, VTM 21-001. And variance, V 21-0001 for reduced ground floor to floor height for the development of a three-story, 39,000 square foot mixed-use structure comprised of 18 residential condominium units and 49, 163 square feet of commercial space located at 24722 Del Prado. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, we do. Danny Giametti will provide a staff report.
Good evening, Chair Nelson, commissioners. Tonight's project is a request to develop a mixed-use structure, which includes 18 residential condo units and 4,963 square feet of commercial space with a reduced ground floor to floor height comprised of one story, I'm sorry, one restaurant with outdoor dining, a retail suite, and two art, and two art gallery slash furniture stores within the town center plan area. So this is the location. The site's an 18,901 square foot lot. It's located southwest of the corner of Del Prado within the, I'm sorry, Del Prado and Old Golden Lantern. It's located within the town center plan area and is zoned TCMU, Town Center Mixed Use. It's bordered by an existing single-story commercial building to the west and multifamily residential to the south and is generally surrounded by a mixture of commercial and residential development. Vehicle access to the site is provided via the rear alley and parallel parking exists on Del Prado Avenue and Old Golden Lantern. It's also located within the city's coastal overlay district but outside of the coastal appeals jurisdiction of the California Coastal Commission map. Similar mixed-use developments have been approved and are under construction nearby the subject development. So this is the topographic survey. The rear alley at the bottom of the screen, as you can see there in yellow, that provides access, as I said in the previous slide, to the proposed parking structures in the site. And then there's also parallel parking along Del Prado and along Old Golden Lantern on street. The topography of the site slopes down from Del Prado toward the alley to the rear per the direction of that red arrow shown here. See the higher and lower indicators there? And the lowest point is at the, located at the southeast corner of the site adjacent to the alley. It's almost four feet lower than the highest point located above the front northwest corner of the property. So the entitlement permits that are required for this project are a coastal development permit, a site development permit, a variance, and a vesting tentative track map. The coastal development permit is required due to the location within the coastal overlay district, but like I said, it's outside of the appealable area of the coastal commission. A site development permit is required for, one, for new development over 2,000 square feet, two, a subterranean and street-level parking structure, and three, for the review of the proposed roof-mounted mechanical screening. A variance is required to reduce the ground floor-to-floor height standard. That's important to note, or it's important to note that this is not a request to deviate from the total height limit of 40 feet. It's simply a request to deviate from the ground floor to floor height standard. And then a vesting tentative track map is required to establish individual ownership for the residential units and the commercial space. This is an illustrative site plan. The proposed scope of work is the construction of a three-story, 39,000 square foot mixed-use structure. As I said earlier, it's comprised of 18 residential units and almost 5,000 square feet of commercial space. The commercial space is highlighted in yellow here on the left, in the front, along Del Prado Avenue. And there's also an option to include an outdoor dining area for the restaurant, which meets parking requirements. That's shown on the right here on the corner of Del Prado and Old Golden Lantern. And that's located within, as I said, the city's right-of-way. And because the project proposes the construction of a building within the coastal overlay district, a coastal development permit is required, as I said in the previous slide, and the site development is, permit is required due to the fact that it's commercial construction over 2,000 square feet. And there is a parking structure proposed as well as the mechanical equipment. It's also important to note that the applicant has the flexibility to remove or omit the outdoor dining area if challenges are experienced that could delay the project such as conflicts with utility easements. So these are the residential units. This is the lower, the passeo court level and the second floor and loft level of the plans. There's an additional level on the, on the following slide. The upper floors contain four, four one-bedroom units and 14 two-bedroom units for a total of 18. Eight of the residential units are located above Del Prado, commercial spaces, and that's shown on the left, those commercial suites. And then on the right here are the, the front units along Del Prado. They're referred to as the Del Prado units. And then there are 10 residential units located on the southern rear of the building, and those are referred to as the south units. Six of the units on the south side contain internal mezzanines or lofts, which I've highlighted in yellow here on the right. The south units include both the mezzanine design that complies with the current definition of a mezzanine, which is, which comes, comes out to a, a smaller design, as well as an alternative design, which is revised to comply with the 2019 Building Code definition of a mezzanine, which is a larger design. If the definition of the, of the mezzanine is not revised by the city prior to building permit submittal, the applicant will utilize the mezzanine design, which conforms to the current zoning code definition. The units also provide open space, private open space, and the units also have direct access to a common outdoor area, which is the passeo court in the center located on the second floor as well as the, the lower floor. This is the upper level. This also does include a courtyard in the center. The, there's eight units located on the uppermost level. So this is the site plan of the parking structure, the street level on the left and the upper, or I'm sorry, in the, in the lower subterranean level on the right. Pursuant to the parking structure requirements within the Dana Point zoning code, a site development permit is required for a parking structure. The proposed structure is divided into the two separate levels shown here. The street-level parking structure entrance is accessed via the alley, which is located at the center of the building, as you can see on the left side there, where the arrows are, red, the red indicating the, in, going in and out of that, of that parking structure. And that contains 21 conforming parking stalls that serves the commercial uses on the street level. The subterranean level parking structure entrance is accessed via the alley as well, but that's located at the southeast corner of the structure. I'm sorry, the southwestern corner of the structure. The arrows in yellow indicate that entrance. This portion of the structure contains 39 conforming parking stalls serving the residential uses. The residential parking structure will be gated, as well as the commercial structure, after the commercial properties close, they will have a gate there as well. The project in total provides 60 parking stalls, where 59 stalls are required based on the residential and commercial parking rates. And if after approval, the commercial uses change and they require, and they require additional parking, the applicant may apply for either a shared parking program, a joint use parking facility, of parking facilities, or another alternative, which requires the approval of additional entitlements. The project also requests modifications to the required commercial and residential parking structure standards, which were discussed in the staff report. The town center plan allows for a modification of parking structure development standards upon approval of the Director of Community Development and the City Traffic Engineer. Both the Director and the City Engineer have reviewed and approved the requested modifications. This is the front elevation along Del Prado. This is obviously showing the commercial and residential facing or along the Del Prado side. The total of, or the building is proposed at a height of 39 feet 11 inches, as measured from the average elevation between the highest and lowest points of the ground, of ground on, of, of ground on the lot, which is the base elevation to the top of the roof. The total height, as measured from that base elevation, is below the 40-foot height limit for buildings located within the town center plan area and therefore conforms with that requirement. And all roof-mounted mechanical equipment screens and an elevator shaft will project an additional 42 inches above the top of the roof, which are allowed or permitted encroachments into the maximum building height limit within the town center plan. And that also is approved via the site development permit that's included in this project. So this is the variance request for the reduction in ground floor-to-floor height slide. So the town center development standards for the building design of ground floor building frontage states that the floor-to-floor dimension between the finished floor of the ground floor of the structure and the floor above shall be at least 18 feet. This dimension is indicated by the red line across the building sections shown on both, both section throughs here. The applicant is requesting a variance from the standard to allow the minimum floor-to-floor height of 16 feet 6 inches, as opposed to the 18-foot requirement, which is a total 18-inch reduction. And that's shown as the green line there. The red line's at 18, the green line's at 16.6. This request is based off recognition of the physical hardship created by the overall slope of the property and to allow the applicant to enjoy the privileges shared by other property owners in the area. So this is a section through of, of the building. This shows how the physical hardship is created as a result of the sidewalk elevation being above or higher than the base elevation. The red horizontal line indicates the base elevation, which is determined by taking the average of the high and low points on the lot. Because the topography of the site slopes downward from Del Prado toward the alley, the overall site has a lower average elevation than the sidewalk and at, at all points along Del Prado Avenue, which is again shown in green, that sidewalk elevation. And applying the 18-foot ground floor-to-floor height dimension within the required 40-feet building height limit and maintaining the interior finished floor elevation of the commercial suites flush with the sidewalk would result in an obsolete floor-to-ceiling heights for the residential units located above the commercial suites. So this design results in a practical difficulty and unnecessary physical hardship inconsistent with the objectives for the town center plan and for the design of, of buildings within the town center plan. Furthermore, if the project was designed with an 18-foot-high commercial suite, commercial suite, ground floor to floor, or height requirement, that commencing, I'm sorry, commencing at the lower base elevation while accommodating the residential units above, then the finished floor of the commercial suites would be almost two feet below the sidewalk elevation, which again is indicated by that red line there with the sidewalk on the left. So this slide is a section through of a different previews, previously approved mixed-use project in the city's town center. After reviewing the topography along the same block of Del Prado, all properties on the north side or the side across the street and in a few of the lots on the same south side of the street as the subject property slope up from front to back, such that the average elevation shown in red here is actually above the elevation of the sidewalk, which is shown in green, along Del Prado, along Del Prado Avenue on either side of the street. Note in this diagram, the red line indicates the average elevation baseline above the sidewalk, essentially providing a 1.1 foot, a 1.1 foot height credit, which is opposite of the subject site. With the requested variance, the proposed development maintains compliance with the town center plan design guidelines in that the reduced ground floor ceiling height is still adequate to provide an active building frontage with large transparent window openings and commercial spaces that are entered into, at a flush elevation with the sidewalk, which creates that interesting pedestrian experience along the project's retail frontage. And again, remember, this is not a variance for overall height. It does not affect the overall building height at all. This is the front rendering of the site, as seen from the corner of Golden Lantern, oh, I'm sorry, Old Golden Lantern in Del Prado. The exterior proposes a modern architectural, architectural style. They're incorporating a combination of sand stucco exterior walls, limestone veneer, and bronzed anodized aluminum with metal details. All the windows, doors, and other openings are proposed with a bronze anodized aluminum finish. And a series of green screens, trellishes, trellises, louvers, and marquees project along the exterior sods of the building to break up the massing of the structure and provide relief, as seen from the street level, which is in line with the town center initiatives. This is the north elevation and east elevation of the property. The north elevation obviously being on top, and then east elevation, as seen from Old Golden Lantern, with the proposed outdoor dining area on the bottom right here. And then this is the south elevation facing the alley with the center parking entrance for the commercial at the street level and then the ramp down on the far left side, down to the residential on the western corner. This is the landscaping that's proposed on the site. As you can see on the upper levels and the, the center courts, they're proposing a mixture of drought-tolerant landscaping to help provide relief from some of the other residential units, as well as along the exterior of the building to provide relief from some of the bulk and mass. Most of the plantings are drought-tolerant and will be, will be either on a drip irrigation system or watered manually. The, the, the image in the center there is the parkway improvements that are proposed along Old Golden Lantern, if this is something that they do move forward with. And then again, the plant types on the right here, there's a mixture of drought-tolerant plants, as well as some trees and shrubbery that will help to screen the building, as well as the residential neighbors from each other. Aside from the requested ground floor or the ground level floor-to-floor variance, the project conforms to the town center plan and the Dana Point zoning code development standards. Additionally, the required findings for all requested entitlements can be made. More specifically, the projects in conformance with the required goals and policies for the California Coastal Commission required for CDP approval. The commercial building, parking structure, and roof projections follow all development standards, entitlements of the, I'm sorry, elements of the general plan and urban design guidelines required for site development permit approval. The proposed maps consistent with the city's general plan and the subdivision ordinance, and the request for a reduction from the required ground floor-to-floor height minimum is justified due to the unique sloping topography of the lot. Based on the above analysis, staff finds that the project, proposed project is consistent with the policies and provisions of the city of Dana Point General Plan, the Dana Point zoning code, the town center plan, and local coastal program. As justifications can be made supporting the requested discretionary actions, staff recommends the planning commission adopt the attached draft resolutions, approving the requested entitlements, subject to the findings and conditions of approval contained therein. That concludes my presentation. Staff and the applicant and the architect are available to answer any questions, if possible.
Great, thank you, Mr. Giametti. Questions for staff? Sure. Commissioner Gabbert?
So, great job, Danny. What happens if the art gallery slash furniture stores aren't able to be occupied and they want to go to retail? Do they have to get a, a shared use parking agreement, or what's the process during, during the CUP?
So the, the Dana Point zoning code outlines some alternatives to parking that are allowed to provide for those additional parking spaces, whether it be through a shared parking program or a joint use of parking facilities. A shared being that they would limit times with on, you know, it would be limited to that, to that lot itself, and they would limit times of, of the businesses so that they could potentially have different uses. Versus a joint, joint parking facility program, which would allow you to utilize spaces off-site if needed. Both those alternatives are allowed through requested entitlements and would have to be reviewed by the, by the director and/or the planning commission if needed.
Okay. Secondly, I know you mentioned some utility conflicts in that sidewalk. Had, has that already been thought through and is, is the outdoor dining going to be able to occur, or is it, are we still too early in the planning phase to figure that out?
I believe the, the Public Works Department, they did an initial review and they concluded that this is something that they potentially could allow for or accommodate. That being said, there's obviously conditions that are prepared in the resolution that would, you know, allow the applicant to apply for this encro, for an encroachment permit to move forward with a, that design. And at that point, they would review it in more depth to determine whether or not it was something that could be accommodated.
Okay. And on that, since we're talking about the outdoor dining and the right-of-way, as part of the development agreement, is there going to be use fees, or how is that going to be resolved?
As far as I know, the Public Works Engineering Department has not typically charged a, a use fee for the use of the, the right-of-way for like an outdoor dining area. It's obviously something that we encourage. That would have to be something that would be, you know, decided later on if that were the case. Typically, the encroachment permit to allow either permanent or temporary use of the public right-of-way has a fee attached to that, and it would be based on, you know, however they, they determine that.
Okay. Let me keep going.
Right.
You went really fast through the mezzanine piece, so I'm still trying to understand the, the design as proposed, how does it not comply with this, the current mezzanine code?
So there were two designs proposed. Obviously, the design that the, that the applicant would like to move forward with, if possible, is a design that has a mezzanine which meets the current Building Code definition of mezzanine, which is a, a larger mezzanine. I don't know the definition off the top of my head, but the, the current, the current approved definition of mezzanine, which is within our LCP, our zoning code, states that it can't be larger than a third of the room that it's in. Okay. So the, because of that, the applicant has provided two designs. We're in the process of amending, doing an LCP amendment that would allow the, us to utilize that mezzanine definition that's in the 2019 Building Code provisions. And if that were the case, and that, if that gets approved by Coastal Commission prior to permit submittal, or, or the application submittal for building permits, then they could go utilize that in large, or that larger mezzanine design. If when the applicant or moves forward to submit, that is not something that has been certified yet, then they would have to comply with the current zoning code definition, which is a third of the, the room that it's in.
Okay. And lastly, this is my last one. There's, the applicant's spending a ton of money on capturing and retaining and cleaning up the water. I would hope that, rather than dumping it into the street, that they would use it as part of their irrigation system. I don't know. Just something for us to look at going forward, so...
Yeah, yeah. Take a look at that. I know the Engineering Department, that's not something that typically require, but that may be something that the applicant can address or can look into further if needed.
Yeah, thanks so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner Gabbert, Commissioner Opal?
Actually, Commissioner Gabbert addressed the majority of my comments, so I'm good. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Vice Chair Donner?
The, the first thing that you, you talked about, Danny, was the, the height of the first floor, and if that were to be reduced, what would the implications be? I think you mentioned that, but it was pretty quick.
Yeah, so if the height of the first floor, are you saying if it were to be?
If we, if we're lowering the height of the first floor compared to the other projects we have in the city, if we lowered it by 18 inches, could we lower the total property, the height of the total property by 18 inches?
Potentially could lower the height of the, the property. That being said, it would not have conforming residential building heights for the stories above.
So the, so the residential units would be below, below the standard, then?
Correct, yeah.
All right. All right. The parking, the spaces that are shown, there's a picture of behind the building that shows cars. Is that part of the buildings that count for the building, or is that the commercial building behind them?
Yeah, the parking spaces that are on the outside, behind the alley, near the entrance of the street level you're referring to, right?
Yes.
Those are part of the required parking stalls. Yep, and they are part of the parking structure, but they're located on the outside of the parking structure wall. They're covered.
No, I'm talking about the backside of the unit where there's no, very few windows, and there shows cars on the, one of the elevations.
Right.
It shows a number of cars parked there. Is that part of that building, or is it part of the commercial building behind the building?
Right, so the lot that's adjacent to it, those parking stalls are, belong to the lot that's adjacent to it. So, they're not on the property, and those are not part of the required parking.
Okay. The residential storage, it requires 100 square feet per, and I guess we have three units below that standard, but the total looks to exceed the requirement. And I had a hard time finding 308, the storage, but it looks like it's in the stairwell. Is that?
Correct, yeah. It's in the stairwell on the western side of the property, near the entrance of the ramp.
Okay. And the open space required is provided by the balconies?
Correct. Yeah, so there's a private outdoor required space, and then there's also the common area. So, the private balconies are included in that.
The project shows they provided 3,538 square feet, but when I total the balcony space, I get 3,768, which is not a problem because it's more than required. So, okay?
Yeah. It may be some sort of a difference in counting. We'll have to take a look.
Great. Thank you, Vice Chair Donner. A couple of questions before we hear, but let me first do disclosure. So, I did visit the site multiple times, met with the applicant once, reviewed the letters that we received over the last couple of days. Question for you. So, do you know, or does our zoning code have a minimum floor-to-ceiling height for residential?
To my knowledge, the zoning code, you know, I misspeak. I'd have to take a look and check. I believe it says 7.6 somewhere in there, but it's, yeah. Let me get back to you on that.
Okay. And I assume, then, that we don't know for sure what the building code requires. So, I'm sure the building code has a minimum. My recollection was, the last check was 7.6.
7.6, yep.
Is building code. So, if ours is 7, the building code rules?
Correct, yeah. Anytime that there's a minimum that's required by building, we would take that into, obviously, to be, that'd be the requirement.
Okay. And then, in looking at the mezzanine plan, so the question, and if you can't answer this, maybe the applicant can, the alternative or the proposed versus what could happen, does that change the unit mix as far as bedroom counts?
I don't believe so, no, because this is based on the, it's based on the number of bedrooms, right? So, it's the unit mix. I don't believe that would change anything, no.
Okay. If the applicant can address that, that'd be great.
Yeah.
I think you talked about, so there's no, is there, there's no shared parking being proposed currently onsite between the commercial and the residential?
Not currently.
Okay. And then, I know you referenced a modification that's part of our Town Center Plan. Is that the note on page A 2.1 about the column and the width of the parking space? That was one of my questions. It's a page on the, I think it's-
A 2.1?
Yeah, A 2.1. There's a reference to change.
And where's the note that you're referring to?
Oh, I gotta find it now. It is... It's on the far left of the sheet on the outside of the building envelope, and it says, "Parking stall next to column modification." You don't see that?
Oh, I see it. Sorry, I was looking at the bottom left. Parking stall next to column modification. Correct, yeah. So, that's referencing that code section for modifications.
Okay, perfect. All right, that's that. Are there, I didn't see any, but I just want to confirm, are there any roof decks being proposed on this project?
No roof decks proposed.
Okay. And then, you know, looking at the stuff you gave, you showed tonight on the slides, as well as the plans, the, one of the questions or things that we may debate here tonight is, relative to the commercial and its location and adjacent to the sidewalk, and would it be allowed to build below the sidewalk? So, we have a fixed point, assuming they can build a ramp or something to get, or stairs. Would they actually be able to do that?
Not for the commercial spaces. So, the Town Center Plan explicitly states that it has to be at the level of the sidewalk.
Okay. So, they're being penalized, in a sense, measuring below grade.
Right. Depending on the way your lot slopes, you almost either get like a credit or a, you know, or you're penalized.
Okay.
Right.
I think those are all my questions. Yep, that covers my questions. Any other questions for staff? Great. Okay. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and call speakers up, and first going to bring up the applicant, Bob Thiel.
Hi.
Good evening.
Speaking of Bob Thiel, just to let you guys know that Bob Thiel is probably one of the most diligent developers that I've worked with in my career, and I'm very grateful for the efforts of staff trying to come up with solutions to meet all the requirements that are in the Town Center Plan. The applicant, Bob Thiel, also had a website that he put up, along with a sign at the project site, to receive comments and concerns, and also held an open house a couple of Saturdays ago. I would say between 50 and 70 people showed up at the open house. The majority of the comments, both on the website and at the open house, were more about interest in getting on an interest list, being the first to purchase one of the units or rent one of the units. We said we did not have a specific agenda The comments that were received were, of course, related to parking, and the other was related to the restaurant use and the potential noise that might be coming from that. But, in general, the comments that were received to us were positive. And with that, I'm going to, if it's okay with you, ask Mr. Thiel to address some of the questions that you were asking.
Sure. Great, thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Chairman Nelson, my name is Bob Thiel, the developer of the project. Some of the questions that I think were probably most important to all the Commissioners seem to be the development of the parkway, which I'll address, and the questions of the residential, I'm sorry, the restaurant use and the other retail uses on the street level. So, with the parkway, the idea in the project is because the east side of that building faces the rising sun, and it's a corner location, we felt it would really be advantageous to put a restaurant there with the idea of having morning uses, working into the midday, taking advantage of the sun coming up, having an outdoor space that's adjacent to the restaurant space. And in looking at the parkway, even though we would, if we don't do anything with the parkway, we'd have to improve it and maintain all of that landscaping and the street trees and irrigation and so on. But, we thought that maybe an opportunity is there that we could capture, and that is, take that parkway, instead of having a sidewalk adjacent to the building, move the sidewalk out to the curb, and then have the patio space adjacent to the restaurant with gates going in and out. And then, that part of the parkway at the north end, we would continue with the development of the parkway with four landscape planting areas. And then, as part of all of that, we had to go into a feasibility study, and I think Commissioner Gabbard asked some questions about the utilities there. We hired a dry utility consultant. They had meetings along with me at SDG&E, Southern Cal Gas, Cox. Very complicated, but we looked into the feasibility of redeveloping the parkway in the nature that I described. And it's feasible. We have to move some utilities, but we think it's a valuable asset to the building and to the city, because we then developed, first of all, we maintained the parkway, as opposed to turning it into parking spaces. And we enhanced the parkway as a part of the building, and then the landscaping creates a buffer between the sidewalk that would be relocated at the curb, and we'd have landscaping as a buffer to the facade of the lower part of the building. So, those are some of the comments on the public parkway. With regard to the retail spaces and the use of those retail spaces, the idea of the restaurant is only an idea. We've got two-plus years to go on developing the project. Towards the end of that, we'll be getting into leasing and the type of uses that we would like to have in the building. The restaurant is pictured now and calculated in all our plans as a restaurant that would go 7:00 in the morning till 10:00 at night. That means that it's required maximum parking onsite. We don't know if that kind of restaurant is, in fact, going to lease the space. It's very possible that we would have a dinner restaurant. So, there's no way of knowing right now. And if it's just a dinner-type restaurant, that frees up all of that restaurant parking in the daytime for other uses on the retail suites of the other, three other retail suites. So, they wouldn't necessarily be limited to art gallery or furniture store. They could be open to any type of retail operation. Okay?
Thank you. Perfect. All right.
Just one more thing is, we'd like the opportunity to respond to any concerns brought up by the public, if that's okay.
Sure. We'll call you back up at the end of public testimony. First up is Paul Wyatt. See, I always like it low because then I can see over it, but, okay.
Better?
It's great.
It seems, I have to duck down. I came, basically, to support the staff's recommendation on the second floor, or the first floor height variance of 18 inches to 16 feet. As you know, I'm a supporter of the Town Center Plan and really look hard at variances. And so, the first thing I did when I got noticed here is look at what it was and figure out what variance they were asked for, and why there might be a variance, and where else that variance would. Because not only do I worry about variances, but I worry about, once a variance is issued, every other developer wanting a variance. So, I really wanted to understand it. And I tracked Mr. Thiel down, and he walked me nicely, walked me through the plan. But, understanding, as you pointed out here in your report, that the, when the property slopes downward from Del Prado or the PCH on those lots in the Town Center, then you put the developer at a disadvantage of those where it slopes upward, because if it happened to slope upward the three-plus feet, he could make the front 41 and a half feet high and so forth, and then putting, you know, an 18-foot first, commercial floor would be trivial. He could do it, right? Slops down. And so, consistent with the Town Center Plan, I think that would be the kind of variance that any of the lots that actually slope downward may ask for, and depending on how far they slope, you may have to have more innovative solutions. But, I think an 18-inch variance is consistent, and I would support that. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next up is Jay Miller.
Commissioners, good afternoon. Or, I guess it's good evening now.
Jim Miller, I'm sorry. I wasn't sure.
That's right. That's okay. That's okay, Eric. As you know or may not know, I'm a resident of Dana Point, but I was also on the Town Center Subcommittee. And I am excited about this project on multiple levels. One, I do support the variance of 18 inches, foot and a half on the first floor. I think that's an important part of the concept to maintain the integrity of the building and the ability for the restaurants or the shops to do business, which is a plenty of good ceiling out for them, which is what our goal was at the Town Center Subcommittee. But, I really, what I really do want to enjoy about this project, it's actually a project that has one lot. It parks everybody on the site. It doesn't have two, three floors of underground parking going, and it actually is the vision of what I thought the Town Center Subcommittee wanted back in 2008. And what I think I like about it the most is there actually is an outdoor cafe on this one. We've had a lot of development in the Town Center. We don't have a lot of outdoor cafes in the current development we have, but this one actually has an outdoor cafe, which is the pedestrian-friendly concept that we were trying to create with the Town Center Plan. And this plan does absolutely do that. And I think that I really do support it. I like that the setbacks on the building, so you can do some extra stuff on the sides. I think it is the first really complex building that I feel meets the vision of the Town Center Subcommittee, what we were hoping to get back in 2008. So, I recommend approving the variance on the project and moving forward with it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Appreciate your comments. Whit Muller. Good evening.
I was listening to some of the against the project already. Reminds me of the Rain Tree project just a few years back, and how skeptical a lot of us were, and concerned, obviously, and including myself. We didn't really know how this would evolve and what would happen as far as the sidewalks being populated with, I can see them now, folks going on the sidewalk with their dogs around and visiting the stores, et cetera. Point being is, we're always skeptical about something new. And this, looking at this picture, all I need to do is look at this picture and say, "Yeah, I'd like to see those buildings all over Dana Point." We need those buildings. We have some nice old buildings, but we can certainly use some newer buildings, because that's what's happening every place, anyway. So, yeah, we can have negative thoughts about it, but looking at that picture, I can't help but say, "Why wouldn't you like to have that in town?" And after all, we live off the public that spends money over here, comes to us here, spends money, and lives here. So, there's a lot of assets go with this project. And again, like I say, I'd like to emphasize that I'd like to see more of them. As far as, again, as far as having, the visual of it, I love. The technical of it, you folks take care of. So, we have no concerns about that. Again, I like the project. I know there'd be folks that don't like, and that they have the privilege of saying that and thinking that, but I think the majority of us that care about Dana Point and care about good visual structures, we would like to see it. And going back to Rain Tree, yes, a lot of people were skeptical. Now, you know, I drive down Del Prado and PCH, and I turn onto Violet Lantern. Yeah, there's a little traffic and all this, but you get this at any project. It just, you love to see that structure. It just, you'd love to see that structure. At first, we were concerned because big, huge, and, you know, bulky. No, it's beautiful.
Great.
So please approve the project.
Thank you for your comments, appreciate it. Next, Terry, Terry Hirschag?
My name is Terry Hirschag, I'm a resident of Dana Point and a longtime builder. Been building in the city for over 20, 25 years. Built many projects, built the homes across the street from Pine Park, eight houses on Camino Capistrano, Castile Del Mar, just finished another one, the Bluff Houses right across the street. Most, if not all, the projects that I've done have been done with Marcelo Liche, the architect, Marcelo Liche, the architect on this project. So I would ask that you look at, not only this project, but if you want to see the future, look at the past. So you could look at the past of the projects that I have done with his help, and I think this would be one of the crown jewels of the projects that have been conceptualized if, when it does get built. If you look at the articulation on the architecture, it's basically four-sided architecture, which is kind of unique in that you can look at, although one side's going to be conjoined with another future building someday, so it's more like three-sided, but all three sides are beautiful. To me, I wholeheartedly approve this project, so I look forward to seeing it built.
Great, thank you, appreciate your comments. Next is Patrick Prendavili.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. Patrick Prendavili, first moved to Dana Point in 1982, and I bought a building right across the street, not directly, but just in the same block, 24661 Del Prado, in 2013. When I bought the building, I was told about the Town Center Concept, and I was really excited about it, and you guys have done a great job with it, I really like how it's developed. What I think is important about this project, that I'm fully in support of, is the fact that our block needs a little shot of adrenaline to get others to do the same thing. For myself, my building, I had a downstairs unit, which is an orthodontist, and then across from the orthodontist is an office. Well, I still have an office there, there's no retail, and of course, we want retail there eventually. So it'd be nice to have a little more momentum to get some retail in my building and others, that would be my intention. So I think it's an absolutely beautiful building, and I think it could be really a great spot as you drive up Del Prado, you head north to see that beautiful building, I think would be a really nice improvement. Thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate your comments. And I believe, Karen, we've already got you. I don't believe there's anything for you to come back up as the applicant. Do we have anybody else wishing to speak? Oh, don't sit down. Mary? Yes, please, come on up. Jazelman?
Yes, Mary Jazelman. I don't have any notes or anything, but after I listened to everybody here that's speaking for the builder, and I know Bob Thiel, and I know he's doing a fine job with the building, it looks beautiful. We live in one of the adjacent houses there in Lantern Bay Estates, and our other neighbors that live along there that are a little closer to that than we are happen to be out of town, and we were out of town when he had the open house, so unfortunately, we couldn't attend that. So this is the first night that my husband Larry and I have seen the actual rendition up there. It looks beautiful. We're just concerned about anything on the Old Golden Lantern side, as the other neighbors are, and what concerns us is dining, outdoor dining till 10:00 on Old Golden Lantern, because sound carries at night. If you're tired and you want to go to bed at 9:00 or 9:30, you're awake and you hear people outdoor talking and screaming till 10:00. We've experienced it with Stillwater, even though that project was never approved or the neighborhood was never notified, it happened, an outdoor sports bar, so to speak, and our neighborhoods had to live with that noise for years. And like I said, I know Bob Thiel's doing a beautiful job, but I would like your consideration in thinking about not having dining, I think that'd be the east side facing our neighborhood. The difference between Rain Tree and this project is Rain Tree is in the middle of the house and not adjacent to single-family dwellings, whereas this is right next to houses that have been there for many years, and we just would appreciate some consideration about the noise level. As it is, we have parking on Old Golden Lantern, and at nighttime, you hear people whooping it up out there until midnight, whatever, screaming, getting in their cars from Stillwater. And it'd be nice if we didn't have more of that. So please, think about, you know, what's going to be on that east side for our neighborhood. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, appreciate that. Any other comments, so bring it back to the Commission for any further questions and I do have one question. Danny, can you walk me through, do we have performance standards relative to outdoor dining, or is that, come back again?
Yeah, we do have some conditions related to outdoor dining, and if they wanted to, there are standards within the zoning code, and if they wanted to deviate from those, they'd have to come back for some sort of additional entitlement. But for instance, the project, the entitlement doesn't, or this project doesn't include a conditional use permit, which would typically be required for an ABC license. And typically, when we do, you know, an ABC license for alcohol service, something like that, we'll add additional conditions that respond to that type of stuff.
And would that come back before the Commission?
Typically, it's an admin level, but, you know, depending on, you know, that, depending on the scope, it may be, it may come to the Commission, yeah.
Okay.
Either or.
Thank you. Commissioner Gabbard?
Going off of disclosures that the Chair spoke about, I also met with the applicant when I was driving north on Del Prado a few weeks ago and saw the, saw the structures there that were supposed to be the story poles, and just wanted to understand what was going on with the project. So he and I met and walked through the whole project from beginning to end, so the, so I just wanted to disclose that. The other, you know, I think that the architecture is very, very well done, I think the land plan is very, very creative, and, you know, I'm going to support the project. You know, just so we've got it on the record, I went through all of the variance requirements that are outlined on pages 11 and 12 of the, of the staff report, and I think that all of them are met. I think that it, to require 18 feet would be a huge burden on the project that isn't shared by other projects within the community, so I'm going to support the findings of the variance as well. So that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Opel?
So this project had to come to be for us anyway for the site development permit and the tentative vesting map, so really what we're looking at here more than anything is the variance of the 18 inches, and based on what Danny had provided us with the sections of what it would be at the lower level, and especially with the fact that the Town Center Plan currently does not allow entrance, it has to be at grade level, I'm very supportive of that. I think, again, as Commissioner Gabbard said, the architecture is amazing, I think that the setback on the upper floor helps reduce the massing of the overall structure and makes it very appealing for that corner, so very supportive of this project.
Great, thank you. Vice Chair Donner?
I agree with the other Commissioners that I support the project. I think it's a beautifully designed building, and I think it's going to make a great contribution in addition to the Town Center. The one issue that was brought up earlier about the noise, I think if you're, there's a sports bar across the street, and I think that a bigger concern is the residents of the condominium that will be concerned about noise. So I think if you're living in the site and there's a restaurant on the site, I think you're going to be able to have some major influence on how much noise is going to be acceptable by the restaurant. So I don't see that as a major issue. And then I guess the next issue is, as we move forward, I'll have a question for Legal about how we proceed with the moving of the sidewalk versus what's proposed, what we have in front of us isn't that. So that seems to make sense to me, it seems like a positive approach, so I guess that's the only other open issue that I have. Thanks.
Is that a question for the City Attorney, is that something that's done at a staff level ultimately? I guess would be your question?
Well, it's hard to answer a question like that in a vacuum, we'll have to see actual plans and know exactly what it is they want to do, but there are a number of methodologies that we could use, ranging from, if necessary, a minor modification of some of the approvals or potentially just administrative approvals, it just depends on what we get.
Great. I imagine staff will, if it rises to a level, it comes back? If it's something that should be done at a staff level, it stays at a staff level?
That's correct.
Okay, perfect, thanks. Great, any other comments? Commissioner Donner? Okay, perfect. So I have a few comments, I just don't disagree with anything that's been said tonight for my fellow Commissioners, appreciate all the feedback tonight. You know, I think as planning Commissioners, we really enjoy when the developers do their job and get out in the community and let them know what is coming. And I know that that occurred here, I actually saw Bob out on the corner, the signs are up, I mean, he's done his due diligence and he's done his job well as it relates to my belief around developer responsibility, outreach, communication. We've got a 14-year-old Town Center Plan that has a number of, you know, conflicting goals and policies when you wrap it up with some of the unintended consequences of Measure H. I don't think it was intended to create the situation that we have tonight, but it's just the byproduct of, you know, one size fits all in a community where nothing is the same, and there is no one size. And I certainly respect it, but I also think it's important that we look at it from a different, a couple of different perspectives. You know, one of the big things that I'd be concerned with is how this could, you know, if the developer is required to meet that 18-foot clear height, can he actually get the mix? Because we have a pretty unique requirement for unit mix within our Town Center Plan, if he can't get that height, it may limit the ability to get that mix, I think that's important. So Town Center Plan could use a cleanup, I mean, I don't think anybody would disagree with that, there's a number of things that we could fine-tune in there, our hands are uniquely tied on this one, unfortunately, so we have to deal with it in other ways. Totally appropriate, though, I don't think of variance in any way, I know it's been used, words like loophole or another words that I don't think are appropriate for this specifically, I don't think this variance request fails in any way to meet the test, the legal standards, and in a way that is clear, it's, you could demonstrate it on the drawings and we can see it in the writing, so I am in full support of the project. I think I do echo the concerns of our last speaker around noise, but I also know that we have rules in place, and I didn't consider the impact of having the neighbors living above it as also part of that process, so that was, I appreciate that comment, Vice Chair Donner. Project's totally consistent with our Town Center Plan, it's compatible with adjacent neighbor uses, performs our zoning, our local coastal plan, absolutely visually enhancing our community, it's a gorgeous building, one I'll be very proud to, you know, have my small but my fingerprints on. And it really ends, not only ends Town Center on Del Prado as it goes towards Golden Lantern, but it also, you know, you can now, hopefully, it will be welcoming, and it'll actually get people to turn right instead of going straight down to the harbor, which will be good for our businesses along Del Prado there. The site is absolutely suitable for this form of development, I think was spoken to tonight, that everything is on-site, including the parking, which is unique and appropriate. As it relates to the variance, there's clearly a hardship with this, the literal interpretation, and when you look at what it would be, if we were able to use the sidewalk and the half-point, this issue wouldn't even be here in front of us tonight. So this is really the result of Measure H, nothing the applicant did, and certainly appropriate for the site. This is really, in my mind, the best approach, I think. Some may look at it and go, well, then we'll just add the 18 inches to the top, which I don't want to be a part of increasing the envelope of the height in the Town Center, I think 40 feet is generous, you can absolutely get what you need within there, but that 18-foot height makes it a little bit trickier, and then you add a sloping site and it makes it almost impossible. And so I think the most appropriate solution is an 18-inch modification, it's totally supported by the evidence, and with that, I'm in full support, and I would, for a motion from anybody.
I move that we approve coastal development permit, CDP 21-0002, site development permit, SDP 21-0006, vesting tentative tract map, BTTM 21-0001, and variance 21-0001 for reduced ground floor-to-floor height for development of a three-story, 39,000-square-foot mixed-use structure comprised of 18 residential condominium units and 4,963 square feet of commercial space located at 24722 Del Prado Avenue.
Second? All right, we got a first and a second, let's vote. All right, that item passes 4-0, congratulations, thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight and speaking. Okay, moving on to the next item. Which is our old business, do we have any old business?
The short-term rentals, so the Subcommittee actually is meeting tomorrow morning to do our final look of the program, and the Planning Commission is tentatively scheduled to have a workshop-type discussion to introduce the short-term rental program on April 11th.
Will there be any posting on social media or any additional outreach just to make sure?
We definitely will.
We've got our stakeholders, but bringing everybody in.
Exactly, we've done such a, you know, extensive job of trying to engage the community up until now, we will continue along that path to do some social media, post the program prior to the Planning Commission meeting as soon as we have that final, and to ensure we have the public who wants to be here on the 11th.
Okay, great, thank you. Old business, we do the new business, any staff reports?
No staff reports tonight, thank you.
All right, Commissioner comments, just start, we'll start with Vice Chair Donner, since we've been going this way all night.
I have no comments, I thought it was well-done tonight, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Do we have any comments? It's great seeing most of you up in San Ramon at the Planning Commissioner Academy, and it's a good program, and good to see you guys, get to know you a little bit. That's all I got. Commissioner Opel, Commissioner Gabbard? All right, with that, adjourned to the next regular meeting of the Planning Commission, which will be held on April 11th, beginning at 6:00 PM or soon thereafter in the City Council Chambers located here at 33282 Golden Lantern, Suite 210, Dana Point, California.